All right, it's seven o'clock, so we can call this meeting to order and we can go with the roll call when you're ready.
Barkle.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Right, unless there is anything to be changed about the minutes, need to approve the minutes from previous meeting?
A little approval of the minutes for the previous meeting?
I'll second him.
Motion in a second, all in favor of approval. Pose, same sign. All right, are there any items to be added to this agenda? Hearing none, could I get an approval, any motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Hi.
All right.
Pose. All right, and we can start with conflict of interest declarations. Kathy, you want to start?
Uh, no.
Chris Barkle, no.
I'm getting, no.
Sherry Hoffman, no.
Matt Evans, no.
Christie Schultz, none.
Right, and then our first agenda item is scheduled for seven oh five. So we have a few minutes.
Jensen said to postpone until next month, planning commission. If you want, we can do two of the Platts, since we didn't have to notify time for those. One is in conjunction with a variance application, so let's not do that one, but the Beckman and Morris plants, Platts, excuse me, if you want to, we can go ahead and do those.
All right, um, do we need a motion to approve those, or to move those to the front of the meeting, or since?
Probably wise, yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to move, uh, the Morris and Beckman plans to the front of the meeting?
I'll make a motion. Sorry, I'll make a motion to move them to the top of the agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Hi.
All right, pose. All right, we'll start with, uh, John Morris Platt, and is a replot of lot six and eight, Whitetail Run, in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section sixteen, T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, here and after, to be known as Lot Twelve Whitetail Run, in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section sixteen, T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat as presented.
Second.
All right, is there anything you have to add?
No, I was gonna, but I'll, uh... Just so you know, let's go. They owned this lot. This lot. These two lots were divided, and they own this one and this one, they planted those two together, now they're plating these together, and then they've applied for a conditional use permit for more storage buildings, so it just puts it all into one package.
All right, unless there's any questions, add a motion in a second. We can go ahead and vote.
Who, who gave the motions, I'm sorry, I was looking that up.
Me.
Uh, Christie.
Christine.
Second by Matt.
Okay. Barkle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, the next plat is the Cheryl Beckman plant, replat of Lot K and Lot L, in the northeast quarter and southeast quarter of section seventeen, ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, now to be known as Lot K-one and Lot L-one in the northeast quarter of section seventeen, ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
She was in last year, she purchased these two lots, we approved the plat for them, she just redrew the lines to make this one a little bit bigger, this one a little bit smaller, they still meet the minimum lot sizes, she just changed her property lines a little bit.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve. Go ahead and vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Right. Those two Platts done, it's now seven oh five, um, and the Jensen variance is moved.
Move to next month.
So then we would still have to wait till our seven-ten, uh, time slot for the next conditional use permit.
This wasn't a gin item, and we can't discuss it, but Don, do you want to take time now and talk about?
Is here?
Yeah.
We talked a little bit last week, uh, or last month's meeting about this, uh, board, uh, sending in ideas, uh, for condition, considerations to change planning zoning, uh, I don't think we got any input from any board members, but this is what came in, uh, from the commissioners and from, uh, the staff. So review this next week, or next month when we, uh, meet, we'll see if you have any additional, uh, comments to add onto this, and, uh, move on with it, we want your input.
All right, seven-ten, so we can move on to, uh, the next agenda item, uh, is the Darren Hoekstein, conditional use permit. African is requesting a conditional use permit to use his cabin as a vacation rental in a moderate density residential district. Per Article Seven, Section seven oh seven, said property is legally described as Lot One in Gavin's Gulch, locating, located in Edgin tract fourteen, as per plat recorded in book S seventeen, page thirty-six, Yankton County, South Dakota, E nine one one address is one oh one Gavin's Gulch Road, Yankton County, South Dakota. Uh, is anybody here to speak on this conditional use permit? Come on, huh, okay, let's start with, uh, let's start as Darren here.
Yeah.
All right, come on up. Yeah, if you want to explain it a little bit, and?
Yeah, so me and my wife, and then, um, uh, two other couples, so I'm Darren Hoekstein, my wife Molly Hoekstein, I'm Jeff Sikora and Megan Sikora of Tabor, Tindler area, um, Gary Dickis and Amy Dickis of Yankton, and we were at Yankton as well, bought this cabin as a, as a rental, it's not a, as a vacation rental, but it's their own vacation home, and we planned on spending time there during the summers, uh, but then when we're not using it, we'd like to be able to rent it out to, uh, one, just help, you know, pay some of the bills for the cabin, and also have it not sit there empty. Um, I work, um, everyone else who owns it works, so we can't be out there constantly in the summer, so our goal is to rent it out, and just to make some money off it, and just, you know, do things the right way, go through the zoning process, but, but we're planning on using it mostly for our own uses, we've been out there extensively already since we bought the cabin in August, and there are lots of weekends using it, so that's our goal in the future, keep doing that, but also, you know, rent it out some as well.
So the cabin's already existing there?
Yeah, it's already existing, it's already built, I mean, cabins one work where it's also kind of a house, it's a full house essentially, uh, we bought in, I believe we closed on in August, and we've been getting it based kind of up to shape, it's, I mean, it's really built for our needs, it's mostly, uh, it's three queens and a bunch of bunk beds for our kids, um, and that's what's, and that's kind of when we're renting it out, or marketing it towards as well. Uh, the community has quiet hours, uh, the community has other rules as well, and we're really kind of marketing it towards families who are just, you know, visiting in the area, um, for when we do rent it out, we have hard lines, we're not gonna try to keep parties out of there, we have that in the, in the rules, we're gonna put online, all that kind of stuff, it's really excited, it's built for, it's been renovated for our usage, but also, um, want to have other families, um, be able to share in that and use it as well.
Are there any questions for Darren from board? All right, thanks.
I just have one question, how much parking is there?
So the parking area is actually pretty big size, the biggest issue is that, and you can see the small, if you look on there, you can see a small area where there's a driveway, um, so you can fit probably two cars behind there, but then you can fit two to three cars behind that as well. Um, it kind of, it's hard to see because there's a tree on our, on the next property where the property line's marked. It's, it's hard to see from here, but you could pit, I mean, we've, we've had at least five or six vehicles out there and been completely on our property, um, but that's obviously not the plan, this is not for parties or anything, the goal is, you know, we, we expect two to three vehicles to be out there, we're really trying to put hard, when we do list this online, as saying, this is for, this is meant for family getaways, essentially, when we're not using it, we're really trying to limit the number of vehicles, um, there, and there are, there's rules, there's no RB parking, um, Gavin's Gulch already has rules, so we're gonna have those listed as well, um, quiet hours, all that kind of stuff, but, I mean, you could fit probably four vehicles, but, um, you gotta be careful when you back out, just, there's a little, I guess, a creek right there.
What about for boats?
For boats, there's no boat parking either, it's part of Gavin's Gulch, it's, it's literally just, it's gonna be vehicles, we're not gonna allow any of that kind of stuff, and that stuff we're gonna, uh, have to keep an eye on, obviously, is, hopefully, is tenants, um, going through Verbo.
And the cabin is in the defined green area?
Yeah, it's the bottom part there.
And whose house is that, right adjacent?
To the left of there?
Yeah.
You guys members, I'm so bad at names, guys. What's that? Byron, yeah, they, they recently just bought that as well, um, we see them out there pretty frequently weekends, and Jeff, I, they do more of the work on the house than I, not the handyman. Yeah, sad state.
He hasn't had any opposition.
No, I think he's hoping to do the same thing, to be honest, but he's not, we're, we live near the cabin, so we've been out there a lot more than he is able to be.
Is there any fences on the property?
Not that there are fences, so if you go back into like the, like the, it'd be to the bottom there, it'd be to, I guess, the south of there, um, there's some fences up in that, like wooded area, but it's not on our property, so no fences or anything.
All right, thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak on this conditional use permit? Straight over here, come on up, state your name for the record.
Gary Ginsbach. Well, I would have to say that, um, I'd have to express my concerns, uh, that will hopefully turn down the request for a conditional use permit at one oh one Gavin's Gulch. I believe letting this property become a vacation rental could have a negative impact in the neighborhood that resides at Gavin's Gulch. Uh, it may cause unwanted noise levels. Vacationers may cause an increase in unwanted traffic around the Gavin's Gulch area. And the main thing is, I believe that if you guys do issue a CUP to the property owner, that could open the door for other property owners to do the same thing. And that's one thing that we just really do not want to happen in the Gavin's Gulch area. I also want to say that we would like to see that one oh one Gavin's Gulch, uh, would just be owner occupied and not allowed, unfortunately, rented out anyway. There are covenants, um, I don't know if anybody has gone over them, or if you've seen them. You want to see them?
Well, I guess, we can take a look at them, but technically, we can't rule on any covenants, because that's not concerning the county.
Part of you, okay. In that covenant, we do list that, uh, there should, there shall be no business, um, or otherwise designed for profit shall be conducted or maintained permitted on any part of the property. And then, that, that's, that'd be about all I have to say.
Right.
Do you live there?
Yes, two zero one.
Which house is?
Which one is that?
The fourth one to the left, up, keep going, one more, right there.
Full time?
Yep.
How many people in that area are full-time residents?
Some of them that aren't here, um, are against it as well, I know I can't speak for them, but, uh, they're out of town, and they are neighbors to me as well.
Is there a road agreement on those roads in there?
As far as who can go on them, who can't?
Like maintenance?
Maintenance-wise, it's pretty much everybody pitches in a dollar amount to cover for snow removal and rework of, and then, as far as that goes, yes. There's not a set HOA, just everybody just kind of contributes into that. I get, you know, the, the people who bought the house, what they want to do, that's fine, we're just hoping to keep out vacationers that are just going to come there for the weekend, do what they want, and present some of these problems that I listed.
Anybody else have any questions for? Thanks, Gary. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this conditional use permit? Sorry. Yep, we'll go over here to the left for. You state your name for the record, please?
Uh, Laura Baker. I, uh, I don't know, Bill, if you can pan out far enough to show my house, I, I'm not part of Gavin's Gulch. I, um, built my house thirty-two years ago, um, across the road. Five forty-eight Rolling Hills Drive. And I have been striving to maintain, preserve a way of life. Yes. Yes. And I tell you what, one Sunday morning, there was a man out in the corner of our yard, and, um, I was like, what in the heck is that guy doing out there? I, I had two little boys, and I went out there, and I'm like, good morning, can I help you? And he's like, uh, just, just doing a little surveying, and I'm like, for what? And he's like, oh, we're gonna build a bunch of rental cabins over there, and there is a creek across the road. And the result was Gavin's Gulch. And we have some delightful neighbors over there now, but Okoboji, we do not want. And so, I'm sorry. You guys are welcome to share a cabin and have your families come, but, um, we don't, we really don't want rental. Um, we've, we've, we've experienced, um, a lot of traffic, um, over the years, increased traffic. We, we can't even enjoy going for a walk down the road anymore, because you just get covered in dust by all of the additional traffic, we don't know who's driving up and down the roads anymore, there's, there's so much building that's gone on. Noise, yes, we live kind of down in this neat little valley there, and anybody sitting on their deck, the voices, you hear everybody, and it's, it's not even loud noise, it's just people sitting on their deck enjoying a barbecue, and you hear everybody's conversations. And it, and it isn't anybody raising cane or anything, it's just, just normal conversation. Um, and I'm afraid, um, a lot of, you know, people coming to enjoy the lake, um, summertime fun, it's not always going to be families that want to come to a B and B, you know, or, or what's it called? Yeah, whatever those acronyms are, so I, I, I understand that, that you would like it to be families, but I don't know that you could necessarily control who's, who's going to rent from you. And unfortunately, um, well, this isn't unfortunate, but my husband and I have been traveling for the last seven years for his work, and we just came back this summer, and did a bunch of renovations on our home, we're here to stay now. But while we were gone, we had home, house sitters living and taking care of our home, and we had two unlawful entries in our home while we were gone. And I am nervous about having additional people, unknown people coming into our neighborhood. And that scares me a lot, because we have an RB and plan on coming and going a bit in our RV, and if we're gone for a month at a time or something, even with, um, cameras and neighbors keeping an eye on things, um, I'm a little nervous about having unknown people in our neighborhood. So those are some concerns we have.
All right.
With this kind of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
All right, come on up, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Miller, I'm at one oh nine Gavin's Gulch, and while I appreciate the new residents coming in, uh, I don't really have a whole lot to add to what Gary and Laura both said, I think they kind of said the whole deal, we've got noise issues that I'm concerned about. Owner occupied is one thing, but vacation rental, um, we all signed covenants when we came in there, and, uh, number eleven specifically states that, and I can read it from here. Everybody's informed what it states, it says, no industry, business, trade, occupation, or profession of any kind, commercial, religious, educational, or otherwise designed for profit or otherwise, shall be conducted, maintained, or permitted on any part of the property. I think when we start to go down that road and we allow one person, it opens the door for several others. I am there full-time, um, and I enjoy the environment. Having the covenants there in place has helped keep the area as it is. The more people that come in, you've got the traffic, the noise, the trash, and like Laura said, the break-ins, I'm very concerned about that. I don't have anything against people that want to come in and enjoy that property, but not as a vacation rental. Thank you for your time.
All right, is there anybody else that, uh, would like to speak on this topic? Come on up.
Jessica Flynn, I'm at two oh four Gavin's Gulch, and, um, I share the same concerns with noise, um, and also it's hard to, difficult to tell from this map, but that is, uh, now no outlet road. So if you do go in, in any of these roads, you have to come past all of our houses, and then pass them all back again, lights and all, which, and we all have windows, and it's kind of a quiet neighborhood, so a little less traffic is better, and also the break-ins and the people, all of our mailboxes are right at the end of the road, we don't really have a like, post office box, so less traffic coming back there even with our, just personal information is. And noise levels, like I said, everything travels in the Gulch, as if you're in this coliseum. I'm not just, I've never had a problem with you guys or anything either, it's just, I, I ranch, and sometimes I'm gone for a while too, and I also don't like the idea of people kind of beandering around. That's, that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close, uh, public comment on this topic, and we have more discussion.
Would you like to, uh, let him reference anything, uh, at the podium from public comment?
Um, yeah, I guess we could do that if Darren, if you would like to.
Would you like to speak, Darren?
Like to address any of the concerns that were brought up?
My name is Jeff Sikora. Yes, I'm part owner in it, I guess, uh, um, I guess the one thing that I question is, is, you know, when you guys are talking about traffic and stuff, um, I mean, it probably isn't gonna be as much traffic there as if it was owner occupied, I guess, but, and we would do our best to, you know, to keep it, you know, all, everybody happy around it and stuff, we don't plan on, I said, we're gonna try and keep the riffraff out, so. All I gotta say, I guess.
Darren Hoekstein again, and obviously, we, we know about the covenant, we know that's there, like, we're not viewing this as, we're not real estate, I mean, they're farmers, I'm an academic advisor, um, we're not real estate people trying to develop something, we're just trying to, you know, a dream of ours was own a vacation home, so we can use it, um, we're just trying to cover bills, and we're not, we're not here to get rich on real estate, that's not our plan, we don't plan on really paying more, this is just a way to try to, you know, not have our buildings set empty all the time as well, too, we don't think that's good for, I guess, the area or for the property itself, so, we're like I said, we're not, we're not trying to get rich off this, it's not a money-making scheme by any means, it's just way to help us fund it so that we can, you know, live part of that dream that you guys have permanently, as well, so, that's all I have to add.
All right, thanks. All right, I will just close it out to board discussion.
Well, once you allow one, you pretty much have to allow others. Yeah, I just want to say something, um, you may or may not realize, we cannot enforce covenants at all as, as the county board, you know, so if there was something that someone did, a neighbor did to another neighbor or whatever, that would have to go to civil court in order to be resolved amongst you. But in the spirit of the thing, they knew going in that these covenants were there. And I think when you're purchasing something, um, and as I said before, we as a board cannot enforce covenants, this is my personal opinion only, because that is what we discussed when we're here working as a board. You kind of have the feeling of security, I would think, that when there are rules in place, and everybody within this development agrees to that, those rules,
you kind of think that, that you're safe from things you don't want happening. So my personal feeling is if you're already sharing it three ways, I understand you want to make this more profitable and, and be able to cover your expenses easier than they were as the three owner of concept. But that really wasn't the deal. You're, you weren't buying a timeshare per se, where you only get a certain lot of allotted amount of time. Because among the three of you, I mean, you could have four months of peace there. You know, and I know that everybody has to work for a living, but eventually, you know, you'll be able to spend more time there. So it's just my personal feeling that I understand and I sympathize with the neighbors because I think that they envisioned their home staying the way it was when they bought it. Or at least the concept of that. So that's my opinion and I welcome all other opinions of the board.
I guess the way I see is it's, what you said is right about we don't enforce the covenants. Being in the lake area right here, we've already approved, this board has already approved several Airbnb type rental situations, exactly the same as this. The conditional use, the access is not substantially any different. The facts of the whole situation, the only difference that we see between this and the others that have been approved is the concerns brought up about the covenants, really. And since we can't enforce those, I don't know if that can sway our decision one way or another. I guess, looking at it, I would say the traffic, if it's a vacation rental, it's going to be less frequent than somebody that lives there full time. As far as security concerns, I guess that would be a concern with any type of bed and breakfast anywhere or where you're gonna have different people, but I don't know that there's a way that we can enforce anything on for security concerns as far as any kind of conditions unless there's an idea that you guys have.
So there's a couple of things that I'd like to touch base on, I guess. I just wanna make sure I get all this right here, so. Does anybody know where it says in our ordinance exactly as far as like what the exact wording is? Like if covenants shouldn't affect our decision or if covenants just are guarded, do you know for sure where that's at? I tried searching it on there and I couldn't find it.
Bill, you wanna address that?
I don't think it addresses covenants anywhere because covenants are a private agreement in the development. They have no effect on the county. So it's a civil issue, not, not a county issue.
Okay, so it's not in the ordinance as far as, you know, okay, perfect, okay. Another, my next thing is, so with CUPs, like ingress egress, like there is, there's supposed to be like certain plans for that, like fencing, stuff like that.
Not really on a CUP, that's something that you can put as a condition. But for something like this, there's no set, you know, it's up to you to decide if the egress fits and is, is good for the situation. If screening needs to be provided, those are all conditions you can set.
Okay.
I would feel at the bare minimum that it should be fenced so that there's a clear boundary of where their property ends. You know, if somebody's renting something, they might think that this is development, they can just, you know, roam through. If it, if there's a fence there, people should be able to understand that that is the limit of the property line. But that's my opinion.
Bill, do we know who the developer was?
Who was it? It should say on the covenants, yeah.
I think the biggest problem with covenant discussion, covenant discussion and everything else that we're talking about here. It's pretty much black and white in the book, what we could do. You know, like you said, we can put conditions on road or egress, ingress into the property, but basically there's one road into the property. There's one in and one out, so you can't, maybe you gotta use this road and that material.
So just, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, just to let you know that has been done in the past on the CUP where they have been told that they can only use one road in and one road out and stuff. Yep, I get it.
You know, so that, that was my point. If there was a road, obvious property right to the main road that went out, we could designate that you had to use that road as well.
Okay.
The road that they got is through development and out. So that, that's kind of a non-point there as far as doing it. I personally don't think that the covenant thing is justice and I shouldn't even talk about it, but there's there's a false hope in my mind that we do, like Mr. Hoxton, if we approve this, that he can do this, the county said it's okay. But if the residents that all sign that covenant and he was aware of that covenant out there, that puts him in big bull's eye for legal battle as to what you're, you're violating the covenant. And I, I feel kinda helpless sitting in this chair, being able to say, well, yeah, you know, it kind of fits into bed and breakfast and, and you know, vacation home or whatever. But I can't, I gotta do like this one, you know, as far as the covenant stuff is concerned because I can't enforce that. And I think that's been with everyone that we've passed where they came through with covenants, even last month when they had covenants and we couldn't even determine what district it really was because they didn't actually plot. But I just, you feel so helpless trying to understand and fumble your way through this to try to protect everybody. And I don't know, and I think that that's something, this paper that we were handed when we came in here for points and things. I think we really need to bear down on some of the stuff that comes along because if you if you investigate or research covenants and zoning laws, there's a whole different aspect of thought out there than what we are handling. So I think that's, you're there and that's not gonna help us tonight get through this. Basically, what we've done before is when we get to this point, if we feel that it fits into the black and white that we have in front of us, we're basically bound to approve it. And what the master plan word is from there.
So one of the things I've heard mentioned and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's in our comprehensive plan. When we're talking about making these decisions, these decisions must be made in the best interest of the public. I believe that the public is talking right now and this is a very hard thing for me to talk about because like with my lake, when the lake was approved, the covenants were completely against it. I thought that it was a good thing that the county said, this is, this is a legal thing, covenants are, we cannot talk about them. I get it. It's a hard thing to admit, but this is a recreational town, a recreational city. And I know a lot of people don't want this to become Okaboji, but how many campgrounds have we approved in the last year? Like 500 sites, something like that, campsites, you know, and town rentals. I personally live right next to the dam. And all three of the houses next to me are not owner occupied. I know what they're saying as far as not as much traffic, cause I do love my house because those aren't owner occupied. But when they are occupied by the visitors, there's 10 to 15 cars in one house. And maybe they can control that. I don't know. So this is a little bit bittersweet for me. I don't know what to do. I mean, I do want to act in the best interest of the public and I do believe this does open a door, but I know, I know what their legal rights are as a property owner, but I don't know what to say as the planning commission. It's tough for me.
Bill, did, did we get, I see there's third Q advertisements that went out. We've had four different people here stop.
You mean regarding the letters?
Yeah.
That nobody called in or stopped in regarding the letters? This is the first voice we've heard against it tonight.
Thank you.
One of the things also that was put on one of my CUPs was road agreement due to the high traffic coming into that part. I'm not saying that we do do this. I'm not saying we don't. It's just food for thought. Like you said, there is just one way in and one way out. I don't know if this will really increase that much traffic, but just an idea, I guess.
That's kinda hard to put a limit on or do something like that because in the development area down there with all the cabins that are there, how many of you have kids? How many have cars? And how many of them go to basketball or go to soccer and go to school and go, go like, and I mean, I've lived in the country my whole life. And he gave himself a neighbor's car on Saturday going to get rush shoes and on Sunday going to church. And now, you know, we have rural residents living out in those houses, you know, cars non-stop. Two, four trips, five trips a day, back and forth jockeying. So it's really hard to limit traffic, you know, put a division on there and limit traffic on those roads when you have no control.
And it's an R2 zone area. So we're expecting people. It's an R2 zoned area, so the expectation is, is that there'll be lots of houses and lots of people, which comes with lots of traffic.
Well, I think the least we can do for the neighbors is ask that their lot be fenced, so at least they won't have someone else's car parked in their space. I don't think that's too much of a restriction to put on there to make them fence property.
What would your idea?
The lot, the lot that they bought.
What would your idea be as far as fencing requirements? Like side, sides. Okay, like on which boundary do you think?
On the boundary of their lot, whatever their lot, no, their lot of their cabin, they do not have any designated lot size on that?
They do, but I'm, I'm not arguing. I'm, I'm agreeing.
Asking a question.
Yep, so.
Basically, like this is the one, Bill?
Yes.
So like I'm thinking all the way around. I don't know how many acres that is.
Well, whatever their lot is, you know, because they should be able to control and fence and so people know where the boundaries are.
Is there, is there a lot of in hills and trees and? Okay.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't have to fence anything that they wouldn't be driving down a gulch to park their car. I mean, what size is the lot?
A half acre.
A half an acre, okay. Or maybe make a designated parking for this unit only. You know, and don't park anywhere else as, you know, a part of the, and have it very visibly obvious, you know, and, and make that a part of the agreement that they do only park in that designated area. Cause I can understand, if there's no fence anywhere, they're just gonna park wherever.
Or it's pets.
Yeah. Yeah. But that's my two cents.
So you're saying a designated parking area and fenced off basically anything that could lead to parking issues?
There's no access from, as I see it, the bottom. There's no access from the bottom, just from the top of the map. Is that correct? So they'd do it from the house towards the lake, they would not allow any access beyond their house.
We really can't see the topography here, but a lot of the topography is like this, you know, yeah.
And builders, there's nothing in the ordinance that would just allow this other than having to get a conditional use permit.
Yeah, it's, it's unclassified conditional use. So it's thinking for, as far as the ordinance, we just have to go by our ordinance. We can't go by covenants or anything like that. They're aware that there's an issue with the covenants, so if they proceed at their own risk, they're aware of that risk. We can't do anything about those.
Bill, the, pretty much the only and just, I'm sorry, Bill, I'm looking for help here. The, if we were to deny this or say some whoever says no to it or whatever, if that does happen, it would have to be like, it doesn't, we don't believe it fits with the neighborhood or something like that.
It's kind of your interpretation because it's an unclassified. Has to go with the comprehensive plan, the best interest. You know, so it's, it's kind of, it's a gut feeling for you.
Okay.
And then it's still gotta go to the county commission for their final decision.
So it's on them.
Don gets to hand it again twice. But yeah, this is one of those, a lot, most CPs, if it's a CUP listed, then you know it's listed, this is unclassified. Chris mentioned, we've done several before. So you're, you just have to look at the big picture and decide what you think is best.
Okay.
At the situation.
Alright, thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Yes. To me, looking at the facts and circumstances compared to other ones, looks very similar. I think having a designated parking area and fencing where it's appropriate towards the access site of the property would be reasonable. And since we don't consider covenants, I guess I'm I don't see how we could deny this based on just the covenants alone when we've approved several in the past. Doing our best to address some of the concerns, I think, is reasonable conditions that we can put on it. Like I said, and Christie mentioned with the parking and fencing, wouldn't be too much to ask. Parking and fencing wouldn't be too much to ask.
Yeah, it kind of runs into a. Without standing on the property and looking at it. It runs into an issue with. You know, it's, you know, limiting parking, parking, limiting this, limiting that, putting a fence around it, whatever. If you're not. Requiring anybody else to do that, if someone has a graduation party or something at their house and they have twenty cars parked out in front of their house. It's no different than having twenty cars parked.
Well, this is a conditional use.
I agree.
Can put conditions on it, because they are asking for something other than residential use.
Like my CUP, I was not only required to do a fence, I was actually required to do a privacy fence. And it was the reason why I asked her, uh, how she wanted the fence was. Like mine was specifically laid out that I had to have full fence on the full west side and east side. And since I own the property to the south, I didn't have to have it there. I personally would like, I believe that's the north. West side of fence line there to really show that border. I don't think that they're gonna go. Into the woods on the other side, and if they are, it doesn't look like they're gonna bother anybody. But I do agree with the parking. For instance, my neighbors do not have a very big driveway, so when fifteen cars come up. They're piling into my driveway, so if I would have been at my neighbor's CUP hearing or whatever, I would have asked. Could they make their driveway instead of single lane like double or something? Um, like I said, I don't think it increases the, the traffic. Except for, like, like I said, I love my house because they're rarely there, but when they are there, they're there. So that's just things that I would like to see, and I do agree with her. It is a CUP, and I really think the fence is gonna help. Keep these people happy. In, I don't know what else there above and beyond a, a bigger driveway and a fence. I don't know how much more we can do.
Well, unless there's any other discussion, I'd entertain a motion. Well, I already did close public comment, but I'll open it up for. I'll give. I'll give you one minute here for comment, come on up.
Just wanna ask you guys, were you aware that a lot of us were against the rental?
Yeah, we, we bought it from pull us, it was correct also.
Right.
Yeah, it's never been a residence before, so that's what we were, through time you can grow away and.
Right. Does it change your mind at all on it?
Okay, you need to address the board.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not, you, you're, you're not allowed to put him on the spot.
Yeah, that's fine, then I was, that's, this is all new to me too, so.
I understand, and I'm not trying to be rude, but.
Is there anything else, Gary, that, uh, you can think of? Uh, I, I know you don't want it. Um, I get it. Like, they said, we can't do anything as far as the covenants go, but is there anything else that you can think of? That would help make this better if it was a rental?
Well, the thing I think most of us got worried about was when we read the letter, it said vacation rental. And so right away. In my head, and I'm thinking everybody else's head. Different. People coming every weekend. Disregarding, even if we tell them to do not this, 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 they might still do it because they're just there for the weekend. And I didn't realize that. They were only going to allow. So much rental, I guess, out of it. To me, it looked like an. Just flip as many rentals as you could. I still don't want it to see it be a rental in any way. That's why I was trying to ask, you know? I didn't, just getting some of the new facts. We don't want it to be a vacation rental where. Where it's just seeing new hands all the time. And if you guys put on. A condition where they have to build a fence. I was trying to get information from the owners, well, maybe it's just too much and they don't wanna do it after all.
Did I, did I misunderstand? Was it a rental when you bought it? Does anybody else know whether that's accurate or not?
Was it a, a rental or a vacation rental? Okay. Gotcha. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
That people, when they came to work for the Corlins' heirs. They set them up to live there for six months or a year until they found another resident. It was rented out badly. Monthly. At least six months to a year, but.
Was, at least the western lot. I think my place for thirteen years, I was staying on the west.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Just keep it to board discussion if there's any more.
Is north up on this then? Okay, so. I'm just trying to figure out what to save in, in a motion for a fence. I don't know if you guys have. Any?
I don't see it being, I see a fence only really having an effect on basically the western border.
The southwest, you think?
Well, yeah.
Between the house?
Basically, yeah, between the houses there, towards the driveway.
Can. I don't know if they can reach their property. Just looks. I'm just thinking about those trees, like. Are they gonna walk through all those trees over there, get up to the north, you know what I'm saying? I, I, I really don't know. That house. I think, but I'm guessing there'd be, I'm guessing there'd be terrain. And on that north side and trees. I mean, technically, by our CUP, trees are screening. I mean, there's a lot of them there.
Right.
And fencing is screening also, so.
Really, the only thing a fence effectively doing, it's not like you're locking somebody into the property, it's just a mark, basically a glorified marker where the property line is. And the only issue on that really is between the two houses.
Okay, um, I'd make a motion to approve this CUP. Requiring a fence on the southwest lot line. Uh, bordering them and the next house and, uh. Ample parking for ten cars.
Great, I have a motion by Matt. Entertain a second or if there's any additions to his motion or suggestions.
Well, I'll second the motion. To put it on the floor for discussion. And my, my discussion is, I'm, I'm not sure what the number of cars is, ten is a lot of cars.
So, uh, the reason why I come up with that is because, uh, next door to my house, um, I've seen fifteen cars. At least, and that's been going on for. Three years they've had it, and every time they rent it out. There's. Pretty, pretty close to that.
Well, that, to me, that's what, what these folks are concerned about in a big way.
Yeah, go ahead, make a comment.
Okay, so. I agree.
So would a condition of like five vehicles be acceptable?
I agree. I agree, um, I think he's right, uh. Trees are part of our, you know, CUPs also, it's just screening.
So you wanna change your motion?
Would you like to change your motion?
Yeah, I can change my motion, um, and you guys said that you are okay with five cars. Okay, um, I make a mo-, I'd like to amend my motion, amend it, right? I'd like to amend my motion, uh, to approve this CUP. On the condition that there is parking for at least five cars within the lot.
Matt, maybe amend it so we say no more than five vehicles. And designated parking area for no more than five vehicles and adequate screening or fencing. Between the two properties.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion, uh, to approve this CUP. With the condition that there is no more. Parking for no more than five vehicles. And proper screening. On the southwest lot line between the houses.
Go ahead. This is the last public comment we're gonna take on this, okay?
Vehicles. That could be motorhome. That could be a plus. We gotta talk cars.
I guess if, Matt, if you'd like to amend it to be just pickups or cars, but I guess I don't see it as a problem, because I don't see a physical space for anything else.
Yeah, um. I don't, I don't know if we need to amend it for that. Do you think we need to?
I, I personally, I personally agree with these statements.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not gonna hurt.
People are gonna come in and visit, they'll be in cars, pickups.
Okay, yeah, I'll amend it again, better safe than sorry. Okay, so, I would, I would like to amend, uh. I'm starting to get flustered here now, um. Okay, I'd like to. Okay, I'd like to amend, uh, my previous, uh, motion to say cars instead of vehicles.
Cars and pickups.
Cars and pickups instead of vehicles.
Alright, sounds good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, I have a second. Is there any further discussion by the board or can we vote on this? Seeing none, let's do a vote.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz.
No.
Weiss.
No.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, motion carried. Alright, so our next conditional use permit originally scheduled for seven fifteen is for John Morris' conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility in a lakeside commercial district per article eleven, section eleven oh seven.
Thank, thank you, everybody, for coming in and expressing your views.
Sorry. Sorry. Uh, said property is legally described as a replat of lots six and eight, whitetail run in southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section sixteen. T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, hereafter being known as lot twelve, whitetail run. In southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section sixteen, T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine one one addresses six oh five Deer Boulevard, Yankton County, Yankton, South Dakota. Alright, is John here to speak on this conditional use permit? Come on up.
Uh, Matt Maris, I'm actually an owner member along with my brother John, so, alright. Uh, we are doing this replat and CUP in order to do an expansion on our current storage unit. Everything that we would do is. You know, consistent with what we've done there, uh, with the, in regards to the other buildings, it'd be. Similar in size as well as materials to construct them. Uh, I guess I don't really know what else there is. Uh, part of this lakeside thing is a landscape. You know, portion which the drawings we submitted did not have any of that. You know, on them, but it would be consistent also with the other three buildings that we have on this site, so. That's pretty much it. If you've got any questions for me, I'm happy to.
So it's gonna have the same setbacks and access and everything as the other two buildings?
Yes, yep.
Actually, you've already, this already had a CUP, they built a structure here already, right?
Yes.
Oh, there's three buildings there?
Yeah, so we've taken that line out with that replat.
We're moving it into that next lot.
It's gonna make it one lot, so there's setbacks, you know, this side they won't have any setbacks, it'll just be the front and the sides.
It's gonna come access off the same. Off the same point of Deer Boulevard, is there gonna be another?
We'd prefer to use a single access point, um. We don't, there's nothing to gain by putting an additional one in there, um. Our facility doesn't need it. If it's something you guys think you need, we'd be happy to do it, but. You know, it's awful close to the corner of the highway there, and we feel like giving that room. You know, most of our vehicles are long vehicles coming in there. There's no benefit to putting another one in, uh. From a traffic, you know, standpoint, I guess, so. Unless you guys decide we need one and we're happy to put one in.
Well, I mean, it's not living space, so you don't have to worry about if there was a fire evacuating people or anything like that.
No, no.
If it was, if it was, uh, uh, you know, even a campground, because there are humans there all the time and lots of them, and if they have to get out, we'll have to get out. But a storage unit, see that it's really fire risk, the way it would be for living borders.
It's more secure if you just.
Yeah, and it makes it easier for them to have security if there's a little lock.
All your, your storage is gonna be inside the building, though, there's not outside. Like parking campers outside or anything like that.
It is all individual units indoors and enclosed.
Well, are there any other questions from the board? Thanks.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that would wish to comment on this conditional use permit? Seeing none, uh, let's go with just board discussion.
I think he keeps his storage units clean, does nice landscaping. I believe, is that crushed asphalt on there? It's not even gravel, it's crushed asphalt, very nice. I think his point on his access also, being further away from that intersection is only better, so.
I guess to me, if it's gonna be, he's already got three buildings there, if it's gonna be the same thing as those and.
Yep.
Everything's gonna be pretty much identical, straight across, I don't see any issue.
It's the neighborhood. And obviously, there's a demand for it.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve this conditional use permit for self-storage facilities.
I'll second it.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, we'll vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, motion carried. Thanks. Alright, the next agenda item is Stuart Huber variance. Uh, applicant is requesting a variance to minimum lot size in an agricultural district, uh, per article eighteen, section eighteen oh seven and article nineteen, section nineteen oh seven. Said property is legally described as tracks one and two of lot A in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section thirty-four township ninety-six north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, uh, Yankton County, South Dakota containing one hundred and twenty-eight point four four seven square feet or two point nine five acres more or less, E nine one one address is four four three nine eight, South Dakota Highway forty-six, Irene, South Dakota. Stuart here to speak on this.
Neil Huber, I'm standing in for Stuart, he's down in Texas yet. And he asked me to stop in, and it's basically just so that, um, what he told me this morning was so if he had to sell the store and the house separate, the store has a better chance of staying open for a buyer. And, um, and with, there'd be a new access road coming off of to the house from forty-six, uh, with that work getting done there, so.
This is a non-conforming lot, it's only a couple acres, it's zone ag. But it's been used for, the house is located here on the plat, Mayfield store is here, so it's been that way for years, so he's asking for a variance for minimum lot size to be able to separate the house from the business. And so, that's, that's what he's, the variance is for.
So right now it's all just one lot?
Correct, but it's still even one lot, it's a non-conforming, it's only a couple acres in the, in ag which is supposed to be two. So.
Right, but it's been there forever.
Yeah, so basically the reason for the variance is because he's taking a non-conforming lot and dividing it into two smaller lots that are non-conforming, so you gotta have the variance to do that.
There's a restaurant in the ball field.
It's over there.
Yeah, really good food.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I should mention too, with reconstruction of forty-six, there's ingress egress here that he's gonna lose, so that's what he's done over here, he's created egress to go back here and to get into this property, so it'll eliminate any traffic coming out of lot forty-six right here.
They're changing it from the, from the, uh, Mayfield store, two forty-six are blocking that off, they're gonna come off of.
Come off of, uh, whatever that is, three.
Which should be a safer access for them.
Yes.
Well.
And that's why they did it.
Leaving.
Yeah, well, I think there was actually, it was kind of a loop.
Yeah, it was kind of a wide open corner for a long time.
Yeah, so they could've come in and out on that, everything now is gonna go to the side row, the looped that way.
Yeah, I think for that reason alone, you know, it's gonna improve the safety of, um, and for him to be able to sell his property easier by having those two things separated, and they are separate uses, so I don't see a problem with it.
It's really not changing.
They're separate uses.
I think that's a great point, is separate uses.
It's not really changing the uses.
No.
Anyway, and it's not giving them any kind of special rights or anything on any of it, so.
It's just kind of a logical thing to do, I think.
I don't remember the last time that the person that actually lived in the house ran the store.
Right now, the guy that is contracted to be able to store, she's living out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next person would not want that.
Right.
So, uh, so if they split this up, do, does the house meet setbacks or anything from the lot lines or the store or is that non-conforming as well?
The house, well, for commercial or for, for ag, probably not.
But you could write those into the variance, I mean, you could.
But the building's pre-existing, so.
Right, I guess it doesn't matter.
What's the address of the Mayfield store?
Would be, uh, four 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 forty-six.
Is it the four four three nine eight?
If you change your access, you can change that, um, address as well. You know, they'll probably make, change his address, because it's gonna be coming off that other road instead of highway forty-six.
Yeah, and then we'd have, you'd have to apply for a separate address, if the address is for the store, you'd have to apply for a separate address for the house. If the address is, either way, so you have a separate address for both.
I don't know, just want you to be aware that it could happen.
So was the art, was the RV park in the back, was that pre-zoning or what? Yeah, was that pre-zoned, like before zoning, or does that have a, that doesn't have a CUP, right? Okay.
I don't know, that was before my time.
This won't affect any of that, right?
No, we're only dealing with the variants.
Okay, I just didn't know if the variance would mess it up or anything.
Well, pretty much any use on it's gonna be grandfathered in.
Gotcha, okay.
So your address off of forty-six, so you would have to get new addresses for the store.
Forty-four.
Yeah. Well, their, their address is off of forty-six.
I know, but I say now, if, if this is approved, they would have to.
We have to, so the post office doesn't, knows where to deliver, you'll have to get a new address for both, otherwise the post office will say you don't exist. We've had that problem before.
Most important thing is you wanna make sure that all of your, um, whatever, bills or house, you know, you make sure you get the, get the address changed on those and make sure you have a list that you don't forget somebody by accident, because they don't, you know, if you never get that bill, you won't even know you owe somebody something.
Bill, is your, your yellow line that you're showing there, is that where the expansion of the, where the right of way is gonna be on the?
No, that's the current right of way.
That's the current right of way, but they're just, they're growing, or they're building into that right of way.
Exactly. So his property line still starts.
Property line would be the same.
This, yeah.
Yeah.
In the map, the new plat has an easement for the house right here.
Right.
Right along that north and west side.
I guess I don't see any issues on it, it's gonna make safety better and make sense for.
So before I make the motion, I think we still need to ask Republican.
Is there any public input, I guess you could check the computers if there's anybody on Zoom.
You get the option to speak against it if you want.
Alright, seeing none, uh, close the public comment.
Okay, I'd like to make an, a motion to approve the Stuart Huber variance. Um, there are two non-conforming lots and we're separating the home from the business and they, um, are already grandfathered in and it will be of benefit to the owner to have these two lots separated. And they are two separate uses.
I'll second that move.
You have to repeat it.
What she said.
Ditto.
Alright, uh, unless there's any further discussion, we can go for a vote, you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
And since you approved the, the variance application, we can do the plat application too.
Yeah, the plat's, uh, only thing left on the agenda really, so, um.
Make a motion to approve the lot.
Second.
Second.
Michael. Okay, Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, motion carried, that's, uh, open up to one last public comment. Seeing none, that's closed.
You're the only one.
And jump fence.
You can leave, he's just teasing you. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Have a good night.
Alright, uh, at the end of the agenda, anything anybody wants to add or need a motion adjourned?
Please look through those, uh, potential changes and so, there's something that's offensive to you, we can discuss it.
Like Airbnb, Airbnb's is on that list, I can tell you I've had numerous calls from investors from outside of Yankton looking specifically to buy houses in the lake area strictly for that, there was one that came on the market for about three fifty and I had, I think, three calls within the first day, and they, that's what they wanted for, so there's, there could be a lot of them coming up, so now's a good time to address it.
Well, when you, when you think about it though, now, we stayed in one over president's, they weekend out hills. And, you know, the, because of where it was, I mean, it's a full development, but it's people that own the house that just, when they're not there, they saw it in one of my good friends owns one right across the street from where we were staying. But like, they limit how many people can park by it, by how much parking space they got cabinet, so you know, when you get there, you can only, there's only room for about three or four vehicles to pull up to it and and then, outside the building, you're on security camera basically all the time, so that's how they make sure the stuff don't get banned.
I think it's all how you organize it and how you manage it, and if you do it right, it's like, somebody's living there, if you don't, it's like a college dorm.
Well, no, it's a lot worse than that, if you turn a place up, you're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
Now, is there something that, I guess I don't see it on here, something to address like covenants?
No, but that, and that would be something that for the state's attorney would give us an answer, can we consider those or not, I would, I would guess.
We add that, if we added something, but I'm not saying we should, but like if we add something in the ordinance that says that this is the ordinance, but if there's a more restrictive covenant, we go by that.
I don't think so, because there was just a, uh, a court case regarding covenants and a vacation rental and the development lost, I don't remember the exact details, but basically the, the owners sued because the, the let, the property development said, the covenants say this, well, they went ahead and they, they won, because it said something, it has to be used as a, a single-family residence. The court said, well, that is a single-family resident, or residential use, I guess is what it was. Renting it out for a family is a residential use in the, the court's mind, so, I would guess Rob's gonna say if they wanna deal with the covenants, go hire an attorney, go for it, but we can't.
I don't think you, no, I think the whole idea of saying that we don't enforce covenants is so the county doesn't get sued.
Well, covenants can be vague too and.
Yeah.
But, but it, but it's just like last month's meeting with the, or the plan that disappeared out of the zoning office. And you know, we all know well that that covenant was exactly what was, what the PUD was, the plan was going in there. So, you know, and I don't know if, if something like that is mentioned in this list of stuff that we have, we need to discuss, but, you know, we need to have in a case like that where you don't have any record of.
There is the, I think one of the last items on the list.
I did see that in there, but, you know, to work our way through that, because I would say that ninety-nine percent of the time when there's a covenant developed, it's developed around what they came in to build to start with. So that shouldn't be, you know, pretty much the same thing as what.
But here's the interesting thing, all my years being a realtor and, you know, how many times developments take their covenants and hire an attorney and actually go after them? Very rarely, that's why they bring them here, because they want the county to do something about it, and I think Christie's right. That's not our issue, leave it, they wanna do something, hire an attorney, it keeps us out of legal issues.
The only, the only thing I have a fear on, on that plan though, is at some point when somebody really wants to push the button that we gave someone permission to do something that they, by their covenant wasn't allowed to do, and at some point along the way, that comes back upon us.
But that's why we can't, that's why we have to separate ourselves from it. That's why we have to say we can't enforce covenants.
And we asked state's attorney, because that, that lawsuit came through and he said, no, that's about covenants. We can go ahead and go ahead with our CUP, so I think his attitude is, it's a covenant, it's a private issue, if you wanna deal with it, hire an attorney and go for it.
That's a private contract among the individuals is what a covenant is.
Uh, yeah.
We're dealing with ordinances, ordinances are laws.
But it, but it, it's also officially recorded. If there are a recorded deed, I mean, it's, it's like a deed in a property, you know, you could go out and buy a piece of property and take your deed up there and somebody squats on it, says, this is mine, even though it's recorded.
So.
And then, then it goes back to a civil thing.
So there's actually, so, I get exactly what you're saying, so, um, for instance, uh, let's say we did say we would do, uh, covenants or something like that, and we, uh, approve somebody or denied them, either way, based on the covenants. We would be going by making sure that those covenants are legal and there's no way that we know that. So that's up for the court to decide, for instance, like the covenants out at my lake, covenants expire after, I think it's twenty-three years. Um, there's a lot of different things they can't be in, like, they have to be in a class, I don't remember how, what, there's different classes that they can be in, there's just a ton of stuff and for us to go off of covenants, we would have to basically have the state's attorney here.
They're also running in that same line as easements, when you have, you know, when you get access to property and stuff like that, because I battled that with a gentleman.
Easements are, are cash.
To the deeds.
Registered deeds there.
Now, but so are covenants, if they're, if they're filed correctly, they are, they are, uh, they're in a register.
But, but.
If you look at the ones that we've seen, they all got a stamp on them.
But an easement runs with the property forever. Okay, the easement runs with that property, it's a restriction on the deed that runs forever. Covenant, that's, that's an agreement among individuals, those individuals that are a part of that CUP or, or housing development or whatever, that's a contract between that Mr. Smith and Mr. Jones. It's not anything to do with the county.
Yeah.
If, if we wanted to.
Just whoever hires it the best way.
Yeah.
I mean, that's their baby.
Yeah, I think.
I want to mention, mention one other thing, I, I'm not sure that everybody's aware, but, uh, area, Bill, has divided up some of their duties, Bill's gonna be our permanent representative to this group.
Thanks.
Like it or not? Like it or not?
Like it or not?
Thanks.
We get a roll call vote here.
Sorry, I can't do that, no motion was made.
Alright, anything else, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright.
Do I need to clean that up at all?
Hi.
Alright. We are adjourned.
Alright, Chris, I got some plats for you to sign.